Good afternoon. It is exactly seven o'clock and we will start the meeting. I want to thank everyone for coming at this very important meeting of the City Council as we do the people's work. At this time, would you please stand for the invocation which will be given by Reverend Walter Hunting, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Reverend, thank you for coming, sir.
Thank you.
Dear God, as the council meets this evening, be present to each member and to citizens who have gathered. With elections behind, we give thanks for the freedom of choice we have in Portsmouth and across the nation. As issues and questions arise here that have no easy answers, we ask for a spirit of wisdom and humility. May there be tolerance towards those who see things differently and willingness to compromise when the public good is at stake. Beginning with the leadership of the council, make Portsmouth a community where everyone is welcomed and respected. Help council members and citizens look beyond their own interests and focus on the city's welfare. We ask these things in your name because we cannot achieve them on our own. Amen.
Amen.
It's a pleasure to have you here. Members of council, would you please indicate your presence electronically?
Seven members of City Council are present.
Okay. Members of City Council, you have before your consideration the minutes of a call meeting of November the 13th, a regular meeting of November, and a regular meeting of November the 13th. Are there any corrections?
Mayor, we have a motion and a second and you will be voting electronically. The minutes are adopted seven zero.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of council, I move that item be submitted to our agenda.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second to have an item added to your agenda and you're This item is adopted seven zero.
Okay. All right, Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make the following motion to appoint John L. Rowe, Jr. as city manager. Mr. Mayor, I move as follows. First, that John L. Rowe, Jr. be appointed as city manager of the city of Portsmouth on an interim basis effective today, November 27, 2012. Second, that you, as mayor, acting for and on behalf of City Council, are authorized and directed to sign an employment contract with Mr. Rowe substantially the same as the contract which has been distributed in connection with this motion. Third, that the city of Portsmouth expresses its gratitude to Brandon Gottfried for agreeing to serve as acting city manager on an emergency basis and for serving in this position with competency, professionalism, and loyalty, and that Mr. Gottfried shall receive additional compensation at the annual rate of $150,000 prorated from October the 23rd, 2012, the date he became acting city manager, through today, when his service in that position ends. Mr. Gottfried shall then return to his prior position as deputy city manager at his prior salary.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second and you will be voting electronically.
Very good.
This item is adopted seven zero. At this time, I'd like to call Mr. John Rowe forward and he will be joined by Councilman Paige Cherry. I in your name.
I, John L. Rowe, Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
And perform all the duties incumbent upon me.
And perform all the duties incumbent upon me.
As interim city manager.
As interim city manager.
Of the city of Portsmouth.
Of the city of Portsmouth.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Now, we need to get right to work, so if, if you would. I know you don't need to know this, but you're behind schedule. So, and as soon as you take your seat, sir, if you would, give us a moment or two of your comments.
Cut your mic off.
Cut your mic off. Been a while, hasn't it, John?
It has been a while.
Okay, all right.
First, want to thank council for council's confidence and faith in me in appointing me as your city manager on an interim basis. I'm a hometown guy. Portsmouth is my home. I grew up in Portsmouth, went to school in Portsmouth, went through James Hurst, John Tolliver, Harry Hunt, and Wilson, and I can tell you, this is a great community. And we have a great team, and that team is the City Council, the city administration, and the citizens of Portsmouth. And I can report to council that our part of the team is going to come to work every day, every day, to make this a better community and to make each tomorrow better than today. And that starts today, sir and ma'am. And so, again, we're rich in our human capital here in Portsmouth. It's our greatest resource, and I am really honored, and it's my privilege to serve this city again. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and God speak. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you please conclude your remarks at that time. Public hearing, 12-460, Public Hearing on the Proposed Adoption by the City Council of a Resolution to Request the General Assembly to Amend the Present Charter, City Charter. Members of council, I have no registered speakers. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item 12-460, on the proposed adoption of the city council, of, by the City Council of a Resolution to Request the General Assembly to amend the present city charter. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak on this item. Members of council seeing no speakers, this public hearing is closed.
Mr. Moody.
I have no comments.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, Madam Clerk.
Unfinished Business, 12-439, Housing Use Permits, Group Housing Use Permits and Use Permit. Item A, Resolution Granted the Request of Ann Boland, Authorized Agent for the Virginia Housing Development Authority, Modifications to a Housing Use Permit Resolution Number R-07-19, granted April 24, 2007. The property is located at 719 High Street and 710 King Street and is zoned downtown D1-T5, HPO703A. Vision principle, a robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call. And just as a footnote for the members of council, this item, at the previous reading, the motion failed by a vote of three, three to deny.
Okay. Okay. Move or approve?
Mayor, we have a motion and a second and you will be voting electronically. This item is adopted six one. Item B. I'm sorry. Item B, Resolution Granted the Request of Ann Boland, Authorized Agent for the Virginia Housing Development Authority, Modifications to a Group Housing Use Permit Resolution Number R-06-18, granted April 11, 2006. The property is located at 723 and 725 High Street and 714 King Street and is zoned downtown D1-T5, GHP06-02A. First reading four two. Vision principle, a robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have speakers. Ms. Ann Boland. And just as information, as Ms. Boland comes forward, she also wanted to speak on the first item, but we moved counterclockwise.
Good evening and thank you very much. My name is Ann Boland, Senior Development Officer at VHDA. I am here to ask City Council to approve our three zoning requests, eliminating and removing the special use permit conditions currently in place that stand in the way of our plans for the additional redevelopment of the Montgomery Square Development at the corner of High and Effingham Streets. We believe that it is important that council and city realize that under VHDA's ownership, as an independent political subdivision of the state, no real estate taxes are paid to the city from this property. Our plan is to invest approximately $3 million into this property and to reposition it as a 100% residential community and then return it to private ownership so that the city may once again realize real estate tax income from this property. We have had many conversations with city planning, zoning, and housing staff who agreed attracting more tenants with good discretionary incomes would better support the recovery of the downtown district. Our current rents range from $1,000 to $2,000 per month. We met with our current tenants to explain our plans for the property and received their unqualified support, and they signed this lovely testament to their support of our plan. We are, a few are, a few of our supporters for the property that are here with Montgomery Square are here tonight, and I want to thank them for being here. We, last night, I met with, as Councilman Moody requested, the members of the Old Town Business Association, and I received their input. I can pass along their hope that our additional investment will bring more bodies downtown to support their businesses. Ladies and gentlemen, VHDA obviously is trying to recoup our investment into this property and return it to private ownership as quickly as possible, but we hope our plan will bolster the city's redevelopment efforts in the downtown area. We have had strong leasing activity for the existing 69 apartment units and are currently 97% leased. Our renovation plan would create 104 apartment develop, in the development. Our development plan includes investing the additional $3 million to result in 36 more apartments located on the first floor. We will provide an interior trash chute to a new compactor for the residents and install a recycling center on the first floor. We would move the leasing office to be centrally located to Effingham and High Streets. The Old Town Business Association last night asked if we would explore placing the fitness center and leasing office on the exterior walls of Effingham and High Street. This will need to be evaluated by our architects and, and the planning officials, and we will if we can do it. If we are not able to place those amenities on the exterior walls, then our plan is to have 16 units along the Effingham and High Streets' exterior walls, which could possibly transition to future office space should commercial demand so warrant. We would add 12 interior parking spaces, multiple bike racks, and an enhanced fitness center. Our plan also creates an outdoor atrium with green space for the exclusive use of our residents. The new units would be finished to the same quality level as the existing apartments, and we would plan to use the original architect to ensure homogeneous design. As part of the planning approval process, we will be combining the interior lot lines to create one unified parcel that includes, as a condition, the parking lot located between County and King Street. This parking lot will be repaved, lighted, and restriped. We ask City Council to approve our three requests to eliminate the current special use conditions and allow us to be treated as any developer of an existing building in the downtown Portsmouth area would be treated today. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Members of council, in my haste to get you through item one, we had registered speakers. Not only was Ms. Boland signed up, but Mr. Mark Godoldik-Giatrowski was signed up. Sir, did you, I mean, we've already passed that item. Did you want to still have comments?
Mark turned down an opportunity to speak. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council and fellow citizens, unaccustomed as I am to speaking in public, I feel that there are some issues raised the last time this item came before you that deserve a little more discussion. I second what Ms. Boland said about treating VHDA like any other property owner. I know a couple of members of council who voted against it last time have played a prominent role in terms of property rights issues, and I've, I know that because we've stood together a couple of times in protecting the right of private property owners. Now, the fact that VHDA is a public agency does not change its stake in the development of this property. They have become the holder essentially of last resort. They were the guarantor, and they have been an important partner with the city of Portsmouth on a number of development projects, and hopefully, they will be favorably disposed to do so again in the future. They enable us to leverage our own resources, those of PRHA and the Greater Portsmouth Development Corporation, to bring properties onto the tax rolls. So, I am loathe to ruffle their feathers. They are, they are the good guys, the people with the white hats, and we need to treat them right. We need to treat them as we would any other property owner. Now, it's good to have a vision. I mean, I don't disagree that there is a need for commercial development in the downtown area, but one thing any number of experts have told us is density is the key to making a downtown viable. And this proposal for conversion of that space from commercial use to multifamily means that there will be more essential density in downtown, which means more prosperity for the businesses in this corridor. And we have a long way to go. You know, the no, the no person's land is on the other side of Effingham. We have not, in the time I have lived here, extended our reach significantly west on High Street. So, density is extremely important, and they are contributing to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Well said.
Members of council, we are on item B, and we're in need of a motion. We have no additional speakers. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is adopted six one. Item C, Resolution Granted the Request of Ann Boland, Authorized Agent for the Virginia Housing Development Authority, Modifications to a Housing Use Permit, Resolution Number R-0824, granted June 10, 2008. The property is located at 739 High Street and is zoned downtown D1-T5, HPO801A. Vision principle, a robust economy for working men and women. And on first reading, this item had a motion to deny, and it failed by a vote of two to four. I have a speaker, Mr. Mark Godoldik-Giatrowski.
I got it all out on the first line.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is adopted six one. Item D, Resolution Granted the Request of Keisha Mason for a use permit to operate a halfway house, also called a residential reentry center, to be known as Gwen's House at 1310 Century Avenue, a property owned by Christian Maul, UP 1210. Vision principle, change and new direction. Electronic roll call, and I'll note that this item was previously denied by a vote of six zero. We're in need of a motion.
Motion to.
To deny.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is denied by a vote of six zero. Okay? Excuse me, seven zero. Long night, sorry. Okay.
And it's early.
And it's early, yeah. Item E, Resolution Granted the Request of James Jolly, Agent for Jobs Venture LLC, for a use permit to operate an entertainment establishment with a lounge and live entertainment at 611 Airline Boulevard. The site is also, the site also includes 601 Airline Boulevard and 1412 and 1414 Hamilton Avenue, UP 1214. First reading vote, six zero. Vision principle, a robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically.
Very good.
This item is adopted seven zero. Item F, Resolution Granted the Request of Sabrina Davis of Rumors Bar and Lounge for a use permit to operate an entertainment establishment with live entertainment at 4644 George Washington Highway, UP 1215. First reading vote, six oh. Vision principle, a robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
A move, denial.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically for denial. This item is denied by a vote of seven zero. City Managers Report, 12-461, Adoption of an Ordnance Accepting a For-for-Life EMS Grant in the Amount of $72,249.32 from the Virginia Office of Emergency Medical Services and Appropriating Said Amount in the FY 2012-13 Grants Fund to be Used by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services for the Delivery of Medical Services. Vision principle, neighborhood and sense of community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. 12-462, Adoption of an Ordnance to Appropriate the Sum of $10473 in the FY 2012-13 General Fund to be Used as Contingency Funding for Future Public Health Department Expenditures. Vision principles, quality of life, and efficient responsive government. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. 12-463, Adoption of a Resolution Requesting the General Assembly of Virginia to amend the Charter of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia. Vision principle, bold new directions. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of council, like to make a motion to amend the resolution concerning amendments to the Portsmouth City Charter. That's Resolution 12-463. Mayor, I move that this item be amended to delete paragraph four, which calls for repeal of the resign-to-run provision in the Portsmouth City Charter. All other items in the resolution will remain as requests to amend the charter.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically.
Very good.
This item is adopted seven zero. 12-464, Adoption of a Resolution Expressing the Concurrent of the Council of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, with the Inducement Resolution adopted by the Economic Development Authority of Pariaco County, Virginia, and approving the issuance of revenue bonds for the benefit of Maryview Hospital and Bon Secours Health Service Systems Incorporated. Vision principle, a robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. 12-465, Adoption of a Resolution Supporting Participation in the Virginia Department of Transportation Fiscal Year 2014 Revenue Sharing Program for the Rehabilitation of Paradise Creek Bridge. Vision principles, neighborhoods, and sense of community, and robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Sir.
We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. 12-466, Adoption of a Resolution Supporting Participation in the Virginia Department of Transportation Fiscal Year 2014 Revenue Sharing Program for the Replacement of the Churchill and Bridge Northbound Lanes. Vision principles, neighborhoods, and sense of community, and a robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption. Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. 12-467, Adoption of a Resolution Supporting Participation in the Virginia Department of Transportation Fiscal Year 2014 Revenue Sharing Program for Rehabilitation of the Churchill and Bridge Southbound Lanes. Vision principle, neighborhoods, and sense of community, and a robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have no speakers.
Move adoption.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. 12-468, Adoption of a Resolution Supporting Participation in the Virginia Department of Transportation Fiscal Year 2014 Revenue Sharing Program for the Extension of L- of Transportation fiscal year 2014 Revenue Sharing Program for the extension of Elliott Avenue. Vision principle: Neighborhoods and sense of community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers. Move adoption.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. 12-469, adoption of, A, a resolution requesting grant assistance from the Virginia Dam Safety Flood Prevention and Protection Assistance Fund, and B, an ordinance to appropriate $5,200 in the FY 2013 Grants Fund for grants funds received from the Virginia Dam Safety Flood Prevention and Protection Assistance Fund for the Spikes Run Dam. Vision principle: A robust economy for working men and women. We will need two motions for, one for item A and one for item B. So, for item A, adoption of a resolution.
Move adoption, second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second for item A, and you're voting electronically. Item A is adopted seven zero. Item B, adoption of an ordinance.
Move adoption.
Second. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. Item B is adopted seven zero.
Okay.
12-470, adoption of, A, a resolution granting, requesting grant assistance from the Virginia Dam Safety Flood Prevention and Protection Assistance Fund, and B, an ordinance to appropriate $5,200 in the FY 2013 Grants Fund for grant funds received from the Virginia Dam Safety Flood Prevention and Protection Assistance Fund for the Lake Calhoun Dam. Vision principle: A robust economy for working men and women. Again, two motions. Item A, adoption of a resolution.
So moved.
Seven. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically.
Okay.
Item A is adopted seven zero. Item B, adoption of an ordinance.
Move adoption.
Second. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. 12-471, adoption of, A, a resolution requesting grant assistance from the Virginia Dam Safety Flood Prevention and Protection Assistance Fund, and B, an ordinance to appropriate $5,200 in the FY 2013 Grants Fund for, from grants funds received from the Virginia Dam Safety Flood Prevention and Protection Assistance Fund for the Lake Kilby Dam. Vision principle: A robust economy for working men and women. Item A, adoption of a resolution.
So moved.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. Item B, adoption of an ordinance.
Move adoption.
Second. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically on item B. This item is adopted seven zero. 12-472, adoption of, A, a resolution requesting grant assistance from the Virginia Dam Safety Flood Prevention and Protection Assistance Fund, and B, an ordinance to appropriate $5,000 in the FY 2013 Grants Fund from grants funds received from the Virginia Dam Safety Flood Prevention and Protection Assistance Fund for the Lake Kilby Water Treatment Plant Sludge Lagoon. Vision principle: A robust economy for working men and women. Item A, adoption of a resolution.
Move adoption.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. Item A is adopted seven zero. Item B, adoption of an ordinance.
Move adoption.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically on item B. This item is adopted seven zero. 12-473, adoption of resolutions, adopting the 2013 state and federal legislative packages. Vision principle: Change and new directions, a robust economy for working men and women, leading maritime center, lifelong learning community, neighborhoods and sense of community, quality of life, efficient responsive government, and a proud military community and pride of past. Item A, adoption of a resolution endorsing the city's 2013 General Assembly Legislative Package, and we have a speaker. Our speaker is Mr. Mark Godol, excuse me, wrong person.
Donna Sae.
Ms. Donna Sae is first, sir. I'm sorry. Ms. Donna Sae.
I was in charge of the work session.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Kathy Revel.
Good evening, Mayor Wright and members of council. My name is Kathy Revel, and I live at 422 Crawford Street, and I just want to take this rare opportunity to thank you for dropping item number seven relating to the subsidy of tolls for low-income people from the legislative packet as one of the litigants in the lawsuit. I really appreciate this decision and wanted to take this opportunity to thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Mark Godoldicki-Trosky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow citizens. I want to follow Ms. Revel's footsteps to thank you for dropping item seven as well, but I have a few other comments. The packet is particularly strong this year, I believe, thanks to the ongoing good work of Ms. Sherri Neal, and I'm ecstatic to see that you all are behind a measure to restore the rights of those who have done crimes and served their time. This has been something that Senator Miller has been the patron of for many years, and it's something I've supported because it's the right thing to do. When Virginia abolished parole as an option, it failed to set in process an automatic way for people who have done the time, paid the fines, and satisfied the demands of society for the crimes they committed to re-enter the citizenry with their voting rights restored. And so, this is extremely important, and I'm glad to have councils backing on this. I think with Portsmouth and other members of the First Cities Coalition making their voices heard collectively, this has a chance to progress farther than it has in the past. So, again, thank you for doing this. I also want to make mention of some other items in the packet that I think are extremely important. There are two or three additional items relating to PPTAs. Portsmouth, if the Midtown Downtown Tunnel Agreement goes into effect, will suffer from the way that agreement was put together. The items that you all have backed, the other items, I believe, five and six in particular, address serious flaws in the PPTA legislation that we have on the books now. So, it's important whether or not it gets through this session of the General Assembly. It's important that a chorus of voices across the state be heard in Richmond. It's important that we have transportation funding sources other than tolls, because when tolls provide the only means of funding infrastructure improvements, new construction, maintenance, then they have to be exorbitant. If we spread it around, the burden will not be that great on any particular segment of the population. So, I thank you for those measures as well.
Thank you, sir.
Members of council, there are no.
A and B.
There are no additional speakers, and at this time, you're looking to adopt or a motion for adoption of the resolution endorsing the city's 2013 General Assembly Legislative Package.
Move adoption.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. Item B, adoption of a resolution endorsing the city's 2013 Federal Legislative Agenda Package.
Move adoption.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. New Business 12-474, Boards and Commissions, Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mayor, members of council, we have the following reappointments and appointments to boards and commissions this evening. I'll read the reappointments first. Library Board, Linnea Whitlow. Planning Commission, Davy Smith III. Portsmouth Port and Industrial Commission, George Watkins. And we have the following appointment to the Supplemental Retirement Board, Laura Bealan.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're going to be voting electronically.
You okay with that, Coach?
This item is adopted seven zero. 12-475, items submitted by council members.
Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, one of my favorite characters from history is Davy Crockett, and I like Davy Crockett. One of his quotes was very brief. He says, "When you're right, proceed ahead." What he didn't say is to proceed ahead and offend others and kind of get bent out of shape. I must admit, in my 14 years on city council, our last meeting, I think I probably went over the edge. I know I went over the edge, and one of the speakers that was here that night, he always gives insight whether you agree or disagree. That particular night, I disagreed with passion, proceeded ahead with too much passion, and I crossed the line. Seemed to have indicated, and trying to make an analogy, I was trying to make an analogy at least, kind of indicated that maybe I didn't believe in separation of church and state, which I did. I think Thomas Jefferson got it right in his day, still support that. The compound matters, apparently, I didn't say that Russia was going to be bombed in five minutes, but I made a President Reagan mistake and turned the mic off while I was still in a sense of passion, and may have had an utterance that I sincerely apologized for. I didn't even realize I had said that. So, I'm man enough, when I say something wrong and offend somebody, I'll certainly apologize to them, and the person I'm apologizing to, won't go unnamed, is Mark Godoldicki-Trosky. He's in the audience, a frequent speaker. But I apologized to him in private yesterday. We had a good conversation, and we've had good conversations in the past, quite frankly. But in my passion, and I love passion, but there is a fine line, and I crossed it, and I do want to publicly apologize to this gentleman. So, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Well done. Doctor, yes. We'll allow it this once. Absolutely. Dr. Edmonds.
Ms. Mayor, our petition pursuant to Portsmouth City Code, section 2-29, that we amend the agenda to allow consideration of an additional item related to funding for a correction study.
Proceed, sir. Okay. We have a second here?
Sorry. Members of council, you have a motion and second to add an item to your. You have a motion and a second before you to add an item to your agenda, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero.
Ms. Mayor, I move that city council approve agenda item 12-44 entitled, "An Ordinance to Appropriate the Sum of $65,176 in the FY 2012-13 General Fund for the City's Share of the Hampton Roads Regional Jail Community-Based Corrections Plan and Planning Study."
Sorry.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and we have speakers.
Okay. First of all, Councilman Cherry.
Thank you, Mayor. Reverend Hunting spoke tonight about compromise in the name of doing the right thing for the good of the people. So, you know, I spoke out in the middle against this the last time it came up, and we had a lively discussion in our work session, but in that spirit, I'm going to support this item tonight.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Whitehurst.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm certainly not against moving the jail. I believe in what we're trying to do. My issue has been, has been some political pressure to move it in haste. I'd like to see all of the different opportunities, whether it be pass for the law and give to some of the other communities around here, or regional jail, or whatever we do. But in the work session, I said I would support this effort if we put on the table all of the potential opportunities to relocate the prisoners from the current location as expedited as possible and as quickly as possible, and with a rush to do that, but not to spend money where we don't need to spend money. I was given this study, it was from the regional jail, April 2012. This apparently is not good enough. We need a special kind of report to say the same thing, I think. What I want to do is make sure I'm spending your money properly. I'm not sure of that right now, but I'm going to go ahead and vote to approve this and hope we'll get all the information so we can make an informed decision.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a good discussion on this, and I opposed it too last time on principle, that the cities had way too many studies that go nowhere, that sit on the shelf, shelves and gather dust. A bookcase could be filled with them, but, you know, we made a point. I think we had a good discussion tonight at the work session. I think we're all on the same page of the songbook. In fact, the to-do list that we gave our city manager, Mr. Rowe, had two items that are ingrained in our brains at this point because we kept repeating them. One is the budget, the other one is economic development, and so, I'm confident that Mr. Rowe will get the wheels turning on economic development and get that old holiday insight developed that's been setting as a parking lot for way too many years now, and hopefully we can get the sheriff in on the decision and the plan to develop the jail site. We, everybody in the city probably needs to know that the jail needs to get off the waterfront, so I think we're all in unity on that, and this will hopefully be a step, small step if that, towards getting it on the tax rolls.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. We have a speaker, Mr. Mark Godolda Kiotrowski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow citizens. Back in August, I sent you an email, and my recommendation to you was the establishment of a blue ribbon commission to review the jail options and to ensure that the sheriff's department was represented in the discussion as the responsible authority for the housing of prisoners. The discussion I heard in the other room involves those two components. I heard those items brought up, and I was pleased that they hadn't just disappeared in the midst of time. But we have a big stake, we, the citizens, have a big stake in the way this is handled. The jail, if we build one from scratch in Portsmouth, will be a major expenditure. I expect it will exceed the cost of the courts because of the special considerations that go into creating a jail that meets contemporary standards. And so it's vitally important that we do this right. And bringing in representatives from across the community, as you did when you had the study of the courthouse, I think is essential. So I hope you will proceed in that fashion. I appreciate the reflection that some of the folks, some of the members of council who were opposed to going forward with the regional jail piece of this, apparently engaged in over the last two weeks, to where they changed so that this thing could move forward apace. Thank you, Mr. Moody, Mr. Cherry, Mr. Whitehurst, for reflecting, reconsidering, and looking for the good of the whole. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, very much. And let me just say, as you take your seat, that this council, this entire council, is interested in doing what's in the best interest for this entire city. And I think the lively discussion and debate that we have are necessary for us to be able to sometimes come to certain and ascertain certain solutions, but I've never questioned, and I don't think anybody else up here ever questioned, what was in the best interest of the citizens. And I'm pleased that that never came into play, even though we had differences of opinions. But you are correct. This council is correct. We're going to make sure everyone is involved in the process, and we're going to make sure that we present something that we all can live with. Because again, we only get one time in the next 40 to 50 years to do this thing the right way. So I appreciate your comments and all the comments that we've got from citizens over the last couple of weeks. This council, and we will, do the right thing. So thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Whitehurst.
Mayor, could we take the suggestion that Speaker appointed with Reverend Committee?
Mr. Whitehurst, we're right in the middle of doing something right now, sir, and we were all on a roll, okay? And we're all in agreement, and we all got the components in place to make sure everybody is satisfied. Can we move on this item without muddying the water, sir?
That's muddying the water?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Jesus Christ.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, city council has added an item to their agenda. As such, you, as the citizens, have the ability to come forward to speak on this item pertaining to an ordinance to appropriate the sum of $65,176 for the Hampton Roads Regional Jail Community-Based Corrections Plan and Planning Study. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak, and of course, did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak on this item. Mr. Goodman, I want to remind you that if you speak, you will not be a non-agenda speaker. Okay?
Good evening, Mayor.
Sure.
City council members, Mr. John Rowe, welcome. I come to you tonight as the chairman of the Portsmouth Council of Civic Organizations. We met on our regular November meeting on Wednesday, November the 21st. As a smaller group, because of the holiday, we were formed as an executive board and had discussions based upon the concern of how the jail process was working. And with that in consideration, we took a vote as an executive board to help support the city in a way that we could help as either a citizen advisory board, similar to what we've already established with the VPA over issues that they were looking to redevelop the PMT property, and create a select group of citizens of like mind and knowledge and capabilities to be able to just simply bounce ideas off of, consider it a think tank. And we would be willing to set that ball in motion as a full board of the PCCO and be your tool to have the citizen input that you so very well deserve to have during this process. So thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, and we appreciate that.
Lieutenant Cherry, just...
I understand.
Okay.
This is my one shot.
All right.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, very disconcerting to hear that you voted seven oh on that. I don't know if everybody understands what that vote meant, but simply, and I have if the sergeant would pass this out, this study that's been so hotly debated is simply for one purpose, solely one purpose only, as outlined in Mr. Simon's letter of September the 5th, and that is for an addition to Hampton Roads Regional Jail, period. Has nothing to do, Mr. Mayor, with shutting the jail down tomorrow or moving right away. You'll see in this letter, it's for one purpose. We are paying for a study so that Hampton Roads Regional Jail knows how much it's going to cost, put an addition on. And I go back to what I said before, why are we paying for that study with taxpayers' money? Additionally, it came up in the work session tonight, and the vice mayor was corrected several times, about statements that Mr. Chandler made. I invite you to look, and you have the copies before you, of April the 18th. Well, Mr. Chandler, who was also chairman of the Hampton Roads Regional Jail, said, "Everybody's situation may be like ours. Therefore, Portsmouth is willing to pay for the entire study." Well, it's pretty much what we're doing now. Then he came back on April the 20th, referring to the same thing, the construction in the jail, goes on to say, "Not only will we pay for the study, but that," and I quote, "He stated as city manager of Portsmouth, 'He will offer Davenport their financial advisor to work with PFM, who is the board's financial advisor.'" He added that the authority could carve out a cost for each member jurisdiction, and even if it leans more towards Portsmouth, then the city of Portsmouth will pay more or even the entire bill. So, Mr. Vice Mayor, you were exactly right. You had a city manager that already agrees the wheels for this, so I'm not really surprised to see that it goes through. Mr. Mayor, our 99 deputies that you want to put out of work in that jail don't share your vision. They share a vision of taking care of their families. The retirees that need to get their money don't share your vision. They are looking to pay for their house payments. That jail, sitting there for a couple of years, isn't going to hurt anything, and in fact, if you'll read this letter, this doesn't even take effect till 2015. The study doesn't take effect till 2015, so the curious thing is what's going to happen between now and 2015. The taxpayers in the city of Portsmouth need to know that if they move those prisoners today, that they are going to pay $6,514,000 more the first year. That's 15 cents, folks, on your real estate taxes. Now, either the city's broke, or you got $6 million somewhere. And if you don't have the $6 million, Hampton Roads Regional Jail is going to bill you, and the taxpayers are going to foot the bill, and you will have an exit from the city. So you'll have a nice piece of property, but all of the people who'll be paying the taxes will be gone. What is the rush? There's nobody in their right mind, on a strapped income, that would go out and buy a house before they sold the one they were in. So why don't we look at getting somebody to buy that building, or at least make an offer, before you decide to take all of these inmates, Mr. Mayor, and move them over there the day after the master plan was discussed? You wrote a letter, everybody's seen it, and you all but said, "Move the people right away." It isn't going to happen. If it does, taxpayers, if you're watching this, watch out. It's coming. Thank you. Are there any questions? Thank you. Good night, Lieutenant. Good night, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the point, our action is for a study. No brick and block have been ordered. And speaking for me, I would never vote if it's going to cost more to house jails, prisoners in that regional jail. I would never support that, not at that kind of money. We could operate our own jail, build our own pod in Portsmouth. But I think that's even more the reason, you know, we've seen so many figures. It's time to get them updated and get an impartial, blue ribbon panel that Mr. Godolda Kiotrowski mentioned, that we spoke of in the work session, that doesn't have a dog in the fight, and let them come up with a good business decision. That's what I want, a good business decision, and what's best for Portsmouth. Paying $6 million more to house prisoners obviously wouldn't be a good decision, but we don't know that yet, so...
That's right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Well done. Dr. Edmonds.
Lieutenant Cherry, I'd just like to say that a study doesn't indicate that we're going to do that one thing. A study is more broader, is broader than that. Look at all the different facets, being inclusive, who would come on a panel, as Mr. Godolsky has mentioned.
No, sir.
Including that of the sheriff even, because he has some parts in that as well. But you've got to look at all of your options, and that's what a study generally does.
Absolutely.
It shows us what we can do, what we can't do, and here are some suggestions. So I don't think we're trying to make a conclusive answer right now. And certainly, the jail, the jail for Portsmouth needs to be under Portsmouth's control. But there are a lot of things that we need to look at, and we can't afford not to look at them.
Thank you, Dr. Edmonds. Well done. Vice Mayor Whitehurst.
I'm having a hard time following. Mr. Godolda Kiotrowski made a recommendation, which I said, "Why don't we do that?" And the mayor said, "We're muddying the waters." What is it about citizens being involved that's muddying the waters? I think we need to use that tool to help us to make the right decision. They're apparently making a decision based on what the mayor wants. We need to look at this thing carefully and try to understand what is really going on. I don't know, and I'm personally have to cast a vote. I want somebody to help me understand what's going on. I ask you again, Mayor, can we appoint a blue ribbon committee, as recommended by Mr. Godolda Kiotrowski, to get this thing on the right pathway? Can we do that, sir?
Vice Mayor, if I can, sir, I'll say once again, yes, you're muddying the waters. At this point, we're in the process of trying to get a study to collect the data. And believe me, you and anybody else that want to continue to confuse this matter, once we get this data, we will bring the appropriate people together to be able to analyze this, and the whole city will be able to have comment. This is not the time to make that motion and make that appointment. Right now, we're in the data collection stage, sir. No one's going to hide anything. So that's my purpose of telling you, you're muddying the waters. We're trying to confuse different issues. We're in the data collection phase, and once we get that data, there are potentially about three or four different options that we will explore, from what I understand. And we will not do that behind closed doors, and we will bring people to the table, everyone that's a stakeholder. So that will happen, sir, but that is not what we're discussing tonight. Okay, any other comments? Madam Clerk. Oh, yes, sir. I'm sorry, the one with hair. I'm sorry, sir.
My name is Reggie Allen. I live in the Brighton section of Portsmouth. And you're talking about forming a commission to do a study. Well, I remember a few years back, Mr. Wright and myself were on a commission for this same type of thing, for the regional jail, you know? And they got the information that was needed, and it's the same thing that happens in Portsmouth all the time, and I hope this doesn't happen again. We get people on commissions to do things for the city, and we get all these facts, and after they turn the facts in, they throw them in the trash. And that's what happened to the committee we were on about the regional jail. So I hope this doesn't happen with what you're trying to do now. Okay?
Mr. Allen, thank you for bringing that up. That is one of the concerns that Mr. Moody raised in the work session, and we all agree with it. And I can assure you, as mayor of this city, that won't happen. Okay? The days of putting people together to study things, to sit on the shelf, are over. We've got a city here to redevelop, and we're all going to be held accountable, and it's all of our responsibility. So thank you for that. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. I see no additional persons coming forward on this item. We're in need of a motion.
We already have a motion.
I'm sorry. I'm looking at different pieces. We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically.
Thank you.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other items to be submitted by council members?
Yeah, Councilman Cherry.
Yes, Mayor. This is not exactly what the vice mayor was talking about, but since we have a new city manager now, or interim manager, can we instruct him to develop a civic engagement plan for council consideration at our January meeting?
Sure. I would not be opposed to that. But again, I think we need to make sure we do that at its proper time. We've given our city manager here our primary responsibilities, and I think we've repeated them twice.
But let him be the point guy for, you know, for this.
Absolutely. I have no opposition to that whatsoever. Thank you, sir. All right?
Okay.
Yep. Let me, yes, Ms. Randall.
The thing that I want to make sure, that there would be input...
Okay.
The thing that I want to make sure of is that there would be input from all members of the council.
Absolutely.
You know, not just a committee thing, that it would be total involvement, because we're all elected.
Absolutely, ma'am.
As representatives for this city, and we should have a board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Very good. Okay, lastly, I only want to say under this item, before we get to the next segment, I just want to, once again, as I always do, thank all of our nonprofits, our churches, and different groups for the volunteer work that was put out during our Thanksgiving holiday, where we serve some of our less fortunate brothers and sisters. I tried as best I could to travel throughout this city on Thanksgiving and witness it firsthand. And one of the most amazing things that I saw were some of the young Jack and Jill kids and others helping, and it is very important that our young people understand what the true mission of what we are as people, and giving back and helping each other. So again, it touches my heart, and I want to use every opportunity I can to be able to thank these organizations, because we have a ton of them in this city that are doing good work. And I just wanted to make that announcement. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. 12-476, report on pending items, Ms. Bernadette Hogg.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. I'm Bernadette Hogg, city embusman, and would like to give you the report on the non-agenda speakers and pending items for the council meeting on November 13, 2012. There were seven non-agenda speakers at the council meeting on November 13, 2012. Two of the speakers required action by staff. Kevin Kelly requested Cedar Road be reviewed for adding reflector strips in areas where there are no sidewalks or lights. At the present time, staff is studying to see if this suggestion is feasible. Christina Carlton provided council members with pictures of concerns within the Craddock neighborhood. While the pictures did not include specific addresses, Ms. Carlton has since forwarded that information to the embusman. Staff has reviewed the addresses of concern, and an email was provided to Ms. Carlton with the department's findings. It should be noted that while some of the properties in question may not look nice, they are in compliance with current city code. That concludes my report.
Just for clarification, those pictures... Just for clarification, those pictures that she showed us is in compliance with city code?
Some of them, yes. Some of them were violations, and they've been cited.
Okay, I just want to make sure we state that for the record, because some of those were deplorable and.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah. I was going to say, you address the code if some of those were in compliance.
Thank you, Mr. Cherry. All right, thank you. Good night.
12-477, non-agenda speakers. Our first speaker is Mr. Joe Wright, and he's followed by Ms. Betty Ashberry.
Honorable Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Whitehurst, council members, Mr. John Rowe, interim city manager, city attorney, Ms. Deborah White and her capable staff, Sergeant at Arms. My name is Joseph R. Wright, 1451 Welcome Road in the city of Portsmouth Cavalier Manor. Due to some of the developments tonight, I have to amend my presentation, but just in case there are some more oral thoughts that come up, especially about me, I'd like to explain first and foremost, I believe in God, and I believe His Son, Jesus Christ, died on the cross for my many sins. Secondly, I volunteered, and I wasn't drafted in the service, in service to my country that I love even before my country loved me. And the only part of the human anatomy that I kiss on a regular basis are the lips of my bride of 55 years. Now, with those things being cleared up, let's go to dirty politics. Mayor Wright and Councilman Hurst, we in Cavalier Manor call dirty politics. They were used on both of you. Councilman Hurst, you, almost 2,000 people in Cavalier Manor voted for you, and I was one of them. If you choose to run again, we are with you. Mr. Mayor, those dirty tricks affected you also. Over 25,000 people, citizens, Portsmouth citizens, voted for you to remain mayor of this city. The highest vote count ever for a mayor, a mandate. But I believe if the misinformation had not taken its toll, the vote would have been over 30,000 citizens. Now, this is not the first time dirty politics have been used in a council race in Portsmouth. Three of you up there might recall a few years ago, a Portsmouth businessman and a solid citizen were smeared with similar tactics, and he lost. It's hard for solid citizens to go into elected public service on account of these low-life scum types who spread this filth. If the shoe fits, then it's you I'm talking about. Now, Mr. Mayor, I like the term Team Portsmouth, but I like the team to be made up of city council members, management, and constitutional officers, including the sheriff, who sometimes you all treat him like a stepchild, or an in-law, and not really a member of the team. But never forget, we out here are still the Portsmouth family. And you might say, we are the Team Portsmouth coaches. And what do coaches do? If you don't perform or produce, we remove you from the team and sign up a replacement for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wright, I want to thank you for those comments, and thank you for the passion in which you delivered. I think it's sad in this city and throughout this country when we will stoop to any level to take down honorable people that want to serve. And it is my passion, as long as I'm in this office, to try to work with everyone that the people elect. And it is also my passion to go throughout this city and look for honorable people that want to serve, because we need those people up here. And we're never going to all agree, but we want to be able to have the best people here so we can make the best decision. So I thank you for that, sir, from the bottom of my heart. Dr. Edmonds.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank Mr. Wright, too, the mayor of Cavalier Manor, and his sidekick and partner in crime, Mr. Reggie Allen. They have become famous men in the city of Portsmouth. And I got a newspaper article with their pictures on it that I'd like to get their autograph, for being so in love with their city Portsmouth, and it's evident they have passion for it and making sure things ought to be done the right way. I commend you on that. Keep up the good work.
Absolutely, sir. Good job.
There was one name left off of Mr. Wright's list that were victim of dirty politics, and that's Councilman-elect Danny Meeks, sitting on the back row. Somebody put stickers on his signs. He had to pay money to have them removed. Somebody conveniently left a court record that was not true, left three copies. There were three individuals, I won't call any names, don't want anybody embarrassed, that were sitting at a table at Mario's, and left a copy of that court record there. The manager who knows Danny got them and gave them to Danny. But I agree with you, Mr. Wright, but let's include all the names that were victims of that, because it is deplorable to put some allegation on somebody's political sign that they've paid good money for and demean their character by distributing a court record that wasn't, the court record was there, but he wasn't guilty of that, and in fact, it was espunged, so it was false to start with. But somebody went to some great time and had some expert, legal expertise to run that copy, and three folks left it on a table at Mario's. So Mr. Meeks, I didn't want to leave him off of that list of victims as well, so.
Thank you, sir. All right, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Betty Ashberry, and she's followed by Ms. Denise Johnson.
I'd like to get these handed out, please. Good evening. My name is Betty Ashberry, and I reside in the Westmoreland Townhouses in the Churchland section. What I'm having handed out to you is what I had intended to say tonight, and I know some of you'll read them, and I know some of you'll throw them in the trash can. That's okay, too. But what you've done tonight has kind of changed what I was going to say a little bit. But first of all, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
You asked me before the meeting if I was going to jump on you again tonight, so let's get that over with, okay?
Please, yes, ma'am.
If you remember, I tried to arrange a meeting with you back before the budget was approved, but you refused to meet with me. You remember that?
No, ma'am.
Oh, yes, you do, because you told me at the meet and greet session out at the church on Townpoint Road that the reason you had refused, because you were informed that I was trying to set up the meeting so that the sheriff or one of his representatives could be there.
Thanks.
Well, I want to tell you this, that was a total falsehood.
Okay.
I just had my 80th birthday not too long ago.
Congratulations.
And the good Lord blessed me with a good mind, fairly good health, and exceptional hearing. But before I go any farther, Mr. Rowe, welcome to a portunate, because I'm a portunate, too. And I really hope you know what you've gotten yourself into.
We tried to warn him.
I want to talk to you about the decision that I think you've made tonight. I agree with you 100% that the jail does not need to be on our waterfront. It's a valuable piece of property. But I've lived in this city all my life, and I remember when the jail was right where it is today, years ago. And when it was torn down for the new building and courthouse to be built, social services had just moved out of the building on Green Street, and they went in and they renovated that to house the prison, the jail population. We got a lot of vacant buildings in Portsmouth. And I just feel like, and I'm not going to signal anyone out, but I just feel like there is a push by someone higher up in the city to maybe eliminate the sheriff's department. And if that happens, what I want to know is, what's going to happen to all of the seniors? And I said I don't speak for anybody else. I speak for Betty Ashberry. Mayor, when I'm up here, I speak for me. I don't speak for anybody else, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
But I'm going to speak for the seniors tonight that depend on the sheriff's department to come out and help them with peeling paint, uncut grass, and because they're being cited for the city to repair their property, and the children on the playground who the grass gets cut for them to go out and play ball. Who's going to do all of that? What are you going to do with the seniors? Are you going to continue to cite them? Are you going to take them to court? Are you going to find them? Are you going to take their property from them? Because I don't think the city's going to be able to handle all of that. And I think there are a lot of things that you need to consider, particularly the fact that's been told to you before, once the jail is gone, it's gone for good. We can't go back a few years from now and say, "Uh-oh, we made a big mistake. Let's have a jail again." You won't be able to do that anymore. The city of Portsmouth has lost so much of its history to begin with. I'm not blaming you all for this, because I think this probably was one of the school board's problem. But we lost our two historical high schools in Portsmouth, the Old Norcombe High School and the Old Wilson High School that stood on High Street. We had a lot of prominent citizens who both had graduated from both of those schools. And now, even though it seems like a minor thing to you all maybe, this city has had some facility since its inception to house people who committed crimes in our city. And if you do away with it now, you'll never get it back again. So I hope you think long and hard, and I hope you put a lot of citizens with a lot of opinions on a blue ribbon committee that Vice Mayor Whitehurst has suggested. Don't let one person dictate to anyone on that council what they want done. You are working for the citizens of Portsmouth, so listen to what the citizens of Portsmouth have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Very good.
Ms. Johnson is followed by Ms. Sharon Jackson.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, new interim city manager, city attorney, and my fellow citizens of Portsmouth. I'm here tonight to follow up on the tennis courts of Cavalier Manor. I know you all had put them on the docket and had asked someone to come back with an estimate. For the past two months, I've met with the Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation. I have another meeting scheduled within a week with the Director of Parks and Recreation, and they would like to know when do you all plan on approving the funds to renovate the tennis court, whether you're going to do, whether you're going to approve it for this fiscal year on this budget or the next fiscal year, which is 2013. And I've also been trying to give them some advice and some of my expertise so far as the USTA is concerned, because I know that after the renovation of the tennis courts and the new fence, we're going to need more things done to really make it out of a very high-level tennis facility. Because I don't know how familiar you are with the tennis facility, but if you look at the average tennis facility, you see chairs and benches, and you have umpire seats on the tennis courts and wind screens, which we had wind screens, but we're going to need a lot of accessories to go along with the tennis facility. And so me and my colleagues, we're planning to do some fundraising and some other things. But anyway, I wanted to come to you all tonight to find out whether or not, what you are planning to do, you know, so far as the budget is concerned, whether you're going to add it to this budget or 2013. That's what they need to know, so. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. And we will get with them, because again, as we have talked privately, me and you, and with Ms. Randall and other members up here, that that is a concern, but it's also a concern that we need to make sure, as Mayor Hollis would say, put in its proper perspective, because there are things that we need to do in our recreational facilities there for that tennis court in Cavalier Manor and other areas in Cavalier Manor and throughout the city. And so.
And that's what I'm focusing on, the entire city, not just Cavalier Manor.
I understand. And that's why we need to look at that. But I appreciate your comment, and we will be getting back with you. Thank you, ma'am. Vice Mayor Whitehurst.
I was going to tell Ms. Johnson that there are two phases. One is that a consensus to do something about tennis courts has passed, or actually consensus. The next phase is actually appropriate money, either in this budget or next year's budget. It should not have any bearing on what else is going to happen, because we all agreed, I think, to do the tennis courts. Just want to let you know that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Whitehurst. Ms. Randall.
Yes, one of the things I would just like to say, that due to the leadership of certain key figures in the community of Cavalier Manor, we would have never had tennis courts out there at all. I'm looking at you, Mr. Wright, because you have to fight that battle to get those courts out there, because you were one of the pioneers that was out there fighting to get opportunities into that community where the residents and the young people could have meaningful recreational activities. We've come a long way, just like Ms. Johnson has spoken, but it has never been put in the comprehensive package when we get to refurbishing the courts around. It appears that we have to always go and ask. It appears as if we're big, and we aren't. We're just asking that the maintenance stay in place because of the large magnitude of the people in that area and the number of young children that are in there. I think the Civic League, they've done a beautiful job out there, the Neighborhood Watch and all. But it ought to be some type of a rotational system, Ms. Johnson, so that every community that is with, have the tennis courts and skating rinks and baseball facilities ought to be on a rotational system, so you know when you're putting them up, you're getting them done, so each community would feel as if they are being included. Particularly, when you look at the taxes that the city collects from those large areas of private homeowners, and that should be a service that we ought to be able to have.
Yes, ma'am.
So I sanction you 100% on that, and I've been out there riding and yelling on my bullhorn, too.
Thank you, Ms. Randall. Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. Hearing everyone speak of recreation facilities reminds me of the Craddock skate rink that we built, I guess it's been three, maybe four years ago now. One element of that isn't finished, and it was supposed to include basketball courts. So I would like to, maybe Parks and Rec can get back with us on where we stand with that. Also, we have tennis courts at City Park. They're clay courts, and tennis players, I think, are divided into two groups, those who like to play on clay and those who like to play on a hard surface. But I'm told that the clay courts at City Park, the lights can't be turned on once it gets dark. So we may want to look at adjusting those so people can partake of the tennis courts that we already have, so. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. No, ma'am, but thank you. We're with you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Sharon Jackson, and she's followed by Mr. Don Scott.
I'm not as experienced at speaking in front of other folks as the people that have came before me. What I am speaking to you this evening about, my name is Sharon Jackson. I live at 2016 Wyoming Avenue on Baines Creek off of Elizabeth River. I'm a transplant from the state of Wyoming, ranched all my life, and I want you to know that I dearly love Portsmouth.
Thank you.
And though I am not a born citizen here, I totally feel I am a citizen of Portsmouth. I'm very proud to be here, and I truly do love Portsmouth. What I'm going to speak to you this evening about is the right to have hens in Portsmouth, laying hens, the chickens. Before 2010, residents were allowed Before 2010, residents were allowed to have hens. And then in 2010, and I have not been able to uncover why, they were disallowed. And if you did have hens before 2010, you were allowed to continue to have them, you were called grandfathered in. And luckily, my hens were grandfathered in, which I'm very pleased with, but I'm very concerned for the other folks in Portsmouth who are very excited and very much want to have laying hens in their backyard. We all understand that we do not want roosters. Roosters are not needed for anything as far as eggs go. Roosters are only needed for breeding stock. They do not, they are not necessary for eggs. We don't want a large flock of hens. I realized that when they told me how many hens I could have, which was nine, they do that through figuring out how much land you have, and every 2,000 feet, you may have one hen. But we would like to have anywhere from four to 10 hens. And because our nation is becoming more and more green all the time, and more and more concerned about our environment and where our food is coming from and how well the earth is being treated, it is, in keeping of a few hens by your residents, it will assist in alleviating several of those fears. I'd like to give you a few of the positives in the information that I did have handed out, and I'm sorry, I only made 10, not realizing there were more people that would be sitting up here. Many of the positives are they don't give off air pollutants, a well-kept coop does not stink, and it does not decrease the value of property. My neighbors are all very, very tickled that I have hens. They fight over who's going to keep care of them when I'm gone. And they also love the eggs that they get from them. They like to watch them while they cluck and dig around in the dirt and everything else. They're very pacifying. Hen waste is mostly water, quickly absorbs into the ground, and it says I'm gonna sum up, I haven't even started, what do I do here? It's a great fertilizer for your ground. They recycle many things. My hens have killed mice. They keep the smaller snakes away. Mine is one of the fewer people that do not have snakes in my yard because of that, and I have watched them actually kill mice. And a good hen will fight off rats, so that's a good deal. Children can learn many things from their hens in the 4H and the FFA classes that they have. It allows for children to have something of a farm animal other than cats or dogs. And as we all know, cats and dogs do certainly make more of a mess than a hen that is kept in your yard. That says I'm out of time. But if you will please read the other stuff that I have given you and consider it. Many, many folks are very interested in having backyard hens. And if you have any questions for me, my name, my address is there, so please contact me if you would.
Well, thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you.
And thank you for visiting us for the first time, and hope you come back.
Oh, I will.
Not to be a regular, but come back and-
I will, I may be a regular.
And I gotta tell you, this, in contrast to the comments part of you getting here with the coach over there wanting to take us out of the game, it looks like I've got four years to lay a golden egg here in this city, so I may need to talk to you offline to work with those hens.
I have been here four years, so you already laid one golden-
Okay, thank you very much. Good night, bless you. Vice Mayor Whitehurst.
I support your hands.
Very good. Madam Clerk.
Our next speaker is Mr. Don Scott, and he's followed by Mr. William Conley.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor Whitehurst, the rest of the council members and fellow citizens. My name is Don Scott. Hey, I live in Churchillon. I just wanted to speak to you real briefly about the debutante cotillion sponsored by the Eureka Club. As you can see to my right, left, I'm an aggie, so forgive me. To my left is a beautiful Ms. Jade Mayhan. Ms. Jade Mayhan is a former Eureka debutante cotillion. The Eureka Club is right here in Portsmouth, Virginia, it's been around 97 years. This is our 61st debutante cotillion. And what I wanted to do is just invite you all to help us continue to make it a success. The cotillion will be held on May 3rd. We had had it in past years at the Chesapeake Conference Center, but this year we'll be right down here at the Renaissance, helping economic development, help work with me. I'm presenting Ms. Jade Mayhan. Thank you, Jade. And she waited all of this time, listening to y'all talking outside, to do this, so we really wanna thank her for being here. But what I wanted to say is that the cotillion will be held May 3rd. There are several members in slots available. We still are looking for 10 to 15 young ladies to participate from Portsmouth, high school seniors. They can call Mr. Bruce Copeland. Mr. Bruce Copeland is available at 757-478-6680, or he can be reached at www.eurekaclubincorporated. Now, real quickly, I wanna tell you a little bit about the Eureka Club. There are several folks up here who have a history with the Eureka Club. Your mayor is a member of the Eureka Club, a former past president, and he, under his tenure a few years ago, he instituted a scholarship program. And since that time, we've given away over $100,000 in scholarships to rising seniors. Vice Mayor Whitehurst is a member of the Eureka Club. He's the one that tricked me into coming out here tonight, and he's promoting this. And he is a longtime emeritus member of the Eureka Club. Ms. Randall is married to a Eurican and a former planner for the dress and wardrobe. Dr. Edmonds is a former escort, you didn't know, I knew that. And his wife is a former deb, and his daughter, I believe, is a former deb, and granddaughter is a former deb. So, I mean, we have a rich history here in Portsmouth, and I wanna thank you guys for allowing me to be here this evening. And, you know, I'm hoping I'm top them hens. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well done. Jade, Ms. Maylin, or Mayhan?
Mayhan.
You're going to Tower Water Community College now?
Yes.
And what was your major, young lady?
Biology.
All right.
Transitioning to take next semester.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And absolutely, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Scott. Madam Clerk.
Following Mr. Conley is Ms. Ruth Goodheart.
Good evening. My name is William Conley, and I live in 475 Water Street in the building known as Admiral's Landing, which I might add is the home of the newly-elected Councilwoman, Elizabeth Simmons. And I'd like to congratulate Mr. John Rowe on his election tonight. Tonight, I'm very proud to tell you that I'm here to, not to represent myself, but to represent the Board of Directors of the Portsmouth Flag Associates. And our address is Box 352 Portsmouth, and zip code is 23705. As you know, we're responsible for maintaining the Veterans Memorial Park at the end of High Street and the 80-foot flagpole that flies there. I'm here tonight especially to remind you that we now have our mailings out and our annual fund drive for our membership. I'd like to tell you that last year, our expenses for repair to the flags and the flagpole was far exceeded what our membership was, but the city was kind enough to donate us the money to cover our expenses. I am very pleased, and this is very pleasing to me, to tell you that the, and I wanna make sure I get this right, that the flags are made here in Portsmouth by the US Flag and Signal Company on 802 Fifth Street, and that's made in America and it's made right here in Portsmouth. So if you're gonna buy a flag, buy it here in Portsmouth. And so now I have some sad news to bring out to you, and I wanna talk to you all personally about this. The Board of Directors on the flag group, we're in a very precarious condition. We're all getting old. We have lost a great many members through their age, death, and what have you. And so we are looking, and the reason I'm here tonight is to ask the people of Portsmouth to come forward and volunteer to join our association, to make sure that the flag always flies over the city of Portsmouth. The flags, the, excuse me, the Board of Directors is an all-volunteer, we are all volunteers. And when the repairs to the flagpole or to the flags are needed, Duff Porter, who lives in Constitution Ave, volunteers his services, and he comes down and takes them. A treasurer, Les French, lives in Glasgow Street. Most of all our members are all-time Portsmouth people. Councilman Whitehurst sits on our Board of Directors. I'm very sad to say this, that the lady who does our mailings and takes care of our membership is retiring from the board, and that is Carol Rowe, who lives in Dogwood Street, I believe. And of course, historian Brewer Moore has told me, asked me to tell you tonight, that the Scottish Walk, and for New Year's Day, will be here. Last year, we had over 400 people showed up for the Scottish Walk. They were in the restaurants, they were all over downtown area, and we spoke to a lot of them, and they were from many different cities throughout the East Coast. In fact, the mayor attended that last year. So now, let's see, I wanna keep track of my notes here. Oh, yes, that's the one part I did not want to forget. You see the flag fly every day down there, no matter what the weather. You see retired Sergeant Major Linfield Moore. He's there all the time. He volunteers his service. He takes care of our flags. When they're broken or when they need repair, he takes them and gets them repaired. When they're no longer repairable, he takes them and has them properly destroyed. The sergeant donates an inmeasurable amount of time, educates us all on the proper etiquette of the United States flag of America. And I do want you to remember that name, Sergeant Major Linfield Moore. He is a true Portsmouth patriot. I thank you for your time, and I hope that all of you on the board receive the membership. I hope that you remember this, and we could use the money. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Ruth Goodheart.
Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here tonight, along with Sharon, to ask your support in amending the ordinance to allow for backyard hens. Sharon has already spoken about the positive aspects of the hens, so I'll try not to repeat too much of what she's already said. I'll take a minute to counter a few misunderstandings that people often have about keeping chickens. Hens are not a neighborhood nuisance. They cluck quietly during the day, and they retreat noiselessly to their coop for the evening. In fact, at their loudest, hens have about the same decibel level as human conversations. It is only the rooster that crows. Hens do not require a rooster to lay eggs, and in fact, most of us are not asking for roosters. Chickens do not attract rodents and predators, any more than do bird feeders, pet food, bird baths. Elevated coops and fencing can eliminate those concerned, concerns. Also, as Sharon said, chickens will seek out and eat pests like fleas, ticks, and mice. Hens do not bite, and small flocks have literally no risk of avian flu transmission to humans. And in fact, the 2006 grain report stated, when it comes to bird flu, diverse, small-scale poultry is the solution, not the problem. And again, I'd like to reiterate that we're looking to raise a small number of hens in our backyards as companion pets and for the eggs. We are not looking to establish a chicken farm. Chicken coops do not need to be ugly. Small flock coops designs can be very charming and upscale. Common design features these days include blending in with the local architecture and matching color schemes. Residents who wish to raise backyard hens would most certainly be willing to pay a reasonable fee, permit fee, to the city. Permits would allow the city to stipulate the number, maximum number of hens allowed per backyard, and require coops and shelter for the birds to ensure responsible henkeeping. We were so excited to learn that Chesapeake has joined the cities and towns all over the country by allowing backyard hens. Would you please support us in our efforts to allow backyard hens in Portsmouth? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. If there's agreement, maybe we can have staff report back with us on, you know, our policy, and maybe make us smart on how we decided to do away with it, and maybe look at what our neighboring cities are doing in that regard.
Sure. Absolutely. Mr. Rowe?
Yes, sir, we'll do that.
Thank you very much. Remember, the mayor's looking for the golden egg.
Yes, sir.
All right. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Prior to our next speaker, Mr. Oakesman wanted to speak.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, I need to make you aware, before you hear the next speaker, that the speaker was involved in a disagreement with a Portsmouth police officer, relatively minor matter. He filed a lawsuit against the police officer. That case went to trial in Portsmouth General District Court, and the court found for the police officer dismissed the lawsuit. The next speaker has now appealed that decision to Portsmouth Circuit Court. The case is due to be tried tomorrow. So it's most interesting that he would choose to come to speak to City Council tonight. Because the case, this matter is in litigation, I respectfully recommend that council members not say anything or comment to the speaker. Speaker does have a right to speak here. I don't, I'm not suggesting that his right to speak be abridged, but please do not engage him. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Mr. Lorenzo Grandison, and he's followed by Mr. Dolores Knight.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor. I'm here to speak about the barring of immunity for city employees and their registered agents, their agents, and everyone that represents the city of Portsmouth. There are a whole lot of situations that's going on in the city whereby people are misusing the governmental immunity clause and public doctrine. They can make mistakes, and then they claim that it's okay because they work for the city. And this has to stop. For example, if a police officer makes a false arrest, he should be held accountable for that action if he veers, if he breaches his duty and goes on his own accord. Even if someone gives false information to an officer during the course of their investigation, that worker should be held accountable, civilly and criminally. They should have to answer for the mistakes that they make, just as an ordinary citizen should. If I gave false information to an officer, then I would be charged as such. And so, the same should go for an employee or a citizen or representative, and as such. And so I ask that the council act on this issue and vacate the governmental immunity, public duty doctrine, and rule as far as city employees, the representatives, and their agents, when it comes to them violating the city statutes, the state laws, and constitutional rights and laws, and not allow the integrity that immunity was based on go on any longer. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, sir. Good night.
Our next speaker is Mr. Dolores Knight, and she's followed by our final speaker, Mr. C.W. McCoy.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor Whitehurst, council attorney Oakesman, citizens, and welcome, Mr. Rowe. My name is Dolores Knight, and I reside at 33 Kennedy Drive. I would like to know why the council is in such a hurry to remove the jail from the waterfront. Here we go again. It is because you don't think the Portsmouth needs a revenue? If that's the case, you can and must lower the real estate taxes now, get an independent auditor ASAP, and hire a city manager full-time. Remember that the Holiday Inn has been demolished approximately four years, and there's no hurry to rebuild on that property. Any explanation? No comment, right? Mayor, watch how you act and talk at the work session and council meetings. Remember, you on candid camera. It is obvious from, it is obvious from the November 13th council meeting. Each council person has their own opinions of how to cast their votes at these meetings, and no one should tell them. If necessary, one needs to do their homework, and remember, all of you on council get paid by the Portsmouth citizens. No place in this world is perfect to live, and no two people are alike. The housing price has dropped tremendously in the last five years, not just in Crowder, where Christina Carlton deals, myself and others in Portsmouth, but throughout the nation and all over the country. I have something that I want to say where I have lived for many years in Crowder. It is a very special and quaint person place to me. One can walk and meet neighbors who are friendly, and they, we talk and pass words and have fun, and just walk and sometimes walk with me. So I know that I and some others used to walk and hand out quarterly Civic League newsletters and monthly Watch newsletters. I enjoy that, but all this now has ceased, but I am still walking. The issue is all that we do not have the support of the city in respects. No one from the council has attended a Crowder Civic League meeting this year. Most do not attend our events in Crowder unless you are asked to appear, and then you leave right away. Lucky city council came, let's see, yeah, lucky city council came up to the Crowder, come home to Crowder, but did not say for the 1:00 o'clock parade, and that was the fun part. All the council members get special invitations to all the events that we have in Crowder, including the Paradise Creek updates and other times, whatever comes up. So we had an issue that, a program that was for the Paradise Creek. Only two people showed up, the mayor because he spoke, and Charles Whitehurst. No one else came. I don't quite understand why some people think Crowder is so bad, and nothing wants to happen, no one wants to help us. But we are strong-willed and strong-minded. Other times, the fire chief doesn't, or no one from the fire department attends our Civic League meetings, and now we meet right behind the station. So this is strange, too. So anyway, they changed the date because they said they thought we did, we had changed our date of our Civic League meetings, and they're right behind, right behind us, and we have never changed the time nor the date at all. But I can go to other meetings in the area, other Civic League meetings, and there's three representatives from the fire department. We have none. Can you explain that? Some have mentioned at the Civic League meeting, and we were told that it's illegal to put trash on Prospect Parkway because that's historical area. Well, they do this, I've seen it twice this week, and neighbors put our trash on Friday after the pickup day is Saturday, on Friday. So another thing is, why would the council not help us when we call in? I call the department heads all the time, and just like I had an issue twice last week, I call the department head, but it never gets any further, and I keep calling the same person for the same problem. So no one here on this council will listen. I mean, when I'm talking, somebody else is talking at the same time. I had an issue a few years back because we had an event coming up, and it was three weeks we had trash that was laying in the square, and they come around and they don't even look at it. So I called one city council, he didn't help me, so then I called another, Charles Whitehurst, and Charles, thank you, you took care of the problem. It has been nearly three years since-
Ms. Knight, your time's up.
Oh, well, let me read this one paragraph.
Yes, ma'am, you can.
This is very important.
I understand.
It has been nearly three years and Crowder Castle has not been gone, it's still standing, and 200 homes should be there where people living in them. So what is wrong with this picture, Mayor? We, the Crowder citizens, along with Mr. Barbara Ned, who has so graciously been good to Crowder, will not accept Section 8 housing. That would be so bad, keeping, trying to keep putting Section 8 in Crowder. So what is wrong with your thinking in this light? We deserve an answer of when we will have these homes built, and don't keep changing the date. We are human beings just like Churchill in Old Town.
Thank you, Ms. Knight. And as you take your seat, I want to let you know that Crowder is a very important component of the Portsmouth family.
Yeah, we think so. We live there.
No, we do, too.
Yeah.
And this mayor does, and this council does. So I appreciate your comments, but Crowder is extremely important, and we all-
It is to me.
-have a vested stake-
Well, no one mentioned this Saturday, it's Christmas in Crowder. No one up there mentioned that y'all have invitations, so I would-
Good night, Ms. Knight, and the mayor will see you at Christmas at Crowder on Saturday.
But that's okay.
Thank you.
I'll be there.
Thank you. Good night. Mr. Moody?
Well, I was going to just suggest to Ms. Knight that she use the Citizen Concern Hotline, and I think that's important because there's a record of the call, and that number is 393-8008, and Bernadette Hogg, she does a nice job in fielding the concerns and really makes a record of it.
Ms. Knight, I've been very lenient with you tonight.
Okay, I just want to answer his question.
No, ma'am.
She doesn't return my calls.
Okay, good night, Ms. Knight. Thank you. Madam Clerk? Okay, Mr. Rowe?
Yes, sir. I'm going to ask Bernadette and Brandon to ask Ms. Knight for a schedule of the meetings for 2014, 2013 of the Civic League. Could you all get with her? If she doesn't have it, ask her to mail it to us, please. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our final speaker is Mr. Luke McCoy. He's here?
I think he left.
Okay. We have no additional speakers, Mayor.
Okay, and I just want to recognize, and I'm sure they were here in support of John Rowe here, so former city manager Jim Oliver, as well as Luke McCoy here, and we really appreciate them coming and their presence, and appreciate the opportunity to see them in these chambers and supporting a very good individual, and Mr. Rowe. Sir, he's standing up, is there a reason?
Can I help you, sir?
I had to sign up to speak. I was wondering if it's okay.
No, sir, it's not.
No.
We'll see you at next meeting.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we adjourn.